Starting from my left to right, we got Bob Swisher from Boney Green, Leon Smith from Rita Church, Percy Almaner from Mattupanah, and Gary Dudley from Western Carolina. Stairs, we got Michael Fitcham, Director of Planning, Chris McKenzie, lawyer, our county lawyer. And Gary Pennington of Planning, and Melissa Blanton, our Office Assistant. We will please stand for the Resolution of the Act. Okay, can I get approval of the minutes from January 28th, 2021?
Mr. Chairman, I shall move.
The minutes have been approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next on our agenda is unfinished business, RZ01 2017 Woodland Belmont. Can I get a staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, the Commission held a public hearing on this item at your February Planning Commission meeting. At that time, you deferred action until tonight's meeting in order to look at the requested changes and to get some more information. You have been provided a numerical analysis of the, or comparison of the proffers from the original proffer request versus the proffer request as proposed. You also, at your desk tonight, have a different proffer analysis from the applicant, which looks at, including some other numbers that staff did not compare, include in our analysis, since ours was strictly number-driven based upon the cash value of the proffer. So you have a couple of other handouts at your desk for your consideration. As, basically to reiterate, the requested change would amend a number of proffers, including a number of cash proffers or development proffers that had a cash value attributed to them. This project was originally approved approximately 15 years ago, and a number of the proffers, to be honest with you, have become stale over time due to various issues and conditions related to development. For example, there is a proffer in the original application that the applicant would contribute up to $50,000 a year under certain circumstances to provide bus transit service to the VRE station up in Fredericksburg. Well, the county actually had Fred Transit Service at one time, but that service was canceled several years ago. So we actually no longer have a transit service that the developer could help finance to meet that proffer. So a number of the proffers have become stale over the years. Another example is the fire station. Originally, the applicant proffered to dedicate two acres of land and to construct a fire station. Times have changed. We actually have another station site that we are in a process of acquiring. So obviously, we don't need the two acres anymore. We also have financed that, and the applicant has offered to increase his cash proffer value from a little over $1,300 up to, beginning at $4,800 per dwelling, which would help mitigate the cost of public facilities, including the fire station. You have our analysis in front of you. You also have the additional information that was provided by the applicant. The applicant is here tonight. If you have any questions that you would like to address, ask him. For the record, the applicant has proposed these specific modifications. It's, so in your consideration, if you forward this with a recommendation, it is based upon the proffers as offered by the applicant? And really, is it subject to discussion or modification?
Listen, we don't have a report from VDOT.
VDOT provided a letter with some questions and actually a desire to look at modification or requested a modification to the traffic impact analysis that was done back in 2007. At this point in time, the applicant has not proffered to, you know, prepare an amended TIA for review. There has been some discussion with VDOT as to whether they could actually require a modified TIA as part of their land use review process. We did not get a definitive answer on that from VDOT.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Benjamin, the proffers that have been presented include some roadway changes.
Yes, sir.
And, under Newton's law, one action has an equal and opposite reaction. And I would really like to have some input as to the TIA. Because if we, for example, we change a boulevard which has a specific definition and make it a smaller road, certainly, how is that going to affect traffic on, for example, I believe it's Macduff Road?
Or Moncure.
Yes. You know, these are some questions that personally I would like to have an answer to.
The four-lane boulevard that was originally proffered was based upon the transportation elements of the comprehensive plan for the Carmel Church area with an eye towards future development in the Carmel Church area of the county. I don't know that the original TIA specifically analyzed a four-lane road. It really looks at the intersections, the major intersections. And, you know, VDOT certainly raised some valid points in their comment letter as to whether, at the end of the day, it would, the four-lane versus the two-lane, whether two-lane is adequate versus a four-lane. I think, based upon the population growth that we are currently forecasting in Carmel Church, the two-lane would be more than adequate. But it was a comprehensive plan proffer, and you're correct. VDOT has said that they would, there's some points that they would like to see analyzed.
And those concerns by VDOT could be addressed later down the road, couldn't it? If there were a TIA?
Yes, we think they can. In fact, we noticed some comments in ours about if it goes to two-lane, maintaining some turn lanes at certain major intersections that I think warrant further discussion. If, in fact, it's a two-lane section versus the four-lane section. Where we're at in reality, we have the proffers that the applicant has provided us. So we have, may have some concerns about not having a TIA. The applicant has not provided an additional proffer to address that. So in looking at it, we have to look at the proffers as they have been proposed.
So, item 39, which was the public safety aspect of it, that seems to be in the process of being addressed.
Yes, the, again, being that the original zoning was almost 15 years old, the county couldn't wait for the development to occur and for us to accept and start developing that proffer with a station. So we actually had to move on and look at other locations that, quite frankly, are arguably better than that original site that was proposed. But yes, we have moved on. We are acquiring property, starting station design, and it is currently in the funding plan before the Board of Supervisors.
And wastewater would not be a problem because I think we've addressed that already?
Yes, sir. We have expanded the plant. The original purpose of that proffer was to basically front-end some of the money that was necessary for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Again, we had to go forward with the upgrade. We couldn't wait for the developer to move forward with their project. The proffer that they have proposed changes the terms a little bit in that the original proffer was a one-time upfront contribution for 75 units at roughly $15,000 per dwelling unit. They've modified that to $13,180, I believe it is. But that's a credit against whatever the overall cost of that fee is. So the home builder would have to make up any difference. We're not losing any money with that proffer whatsoever. It's basically a credit towards whatever the ultimate fee is for a single-family dwelling.
Thank you. What about item 38, the educational side?
Again, we have not had any programs move forward, and that was an educational program that I think was of interest to the developer at that time. So again, yes, there is a cash value attributable to that, but it is not a direct proffer to the county that we are actually losing money towards a capital project. That was more of a program proffer.
And I guess what I'm really getting at is, if they are able to complete these 526 units in a five-year span, hopefully, there are going to be children involved. How is that going to affect our school system?
School age multiplier in the county has gone down significantly. We used to use a school age multiplier of one school-aged child per single-family detached dwelling unit. We are nowhere close to that in terms of the impacts now. You're probably down to somewhere, and I'm using a rough calculation here, of maybe two to .25 school-aged children per dwelling across the board. You know, we've built quite a few houses in the last couple of years, but the school population figure remains relatively constant, or in a couple of years, it's actually gone down. So we're building more, yet the school, the school numbers are holding steady or going down. So that tells us that the school age multipliers are going down as well.
So we'll be able to hold our own with the school system? At least as it stands right now?
As it stands now, yes, and this is a small number compared to some of the other projects that we have out there, like Lady Smith Village in Pendleton. At the end of the day, they're all going to add up. This is a smaller project by comparison.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are we ready to make a motion?
This is on the rezoning, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please. Whereas rezoning request RZ01 2017 Woodland Belmont appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map, and whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of this request, I recommend that RZ01 2017 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Opposed? Roll call vote, Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Minor?
Aye.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Motion carries three to one. Mattupanah District voting against.
Next on our agenda, SPEX02-2020 Head Start Program. Can I have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has updated the general development plan to reflect a full entrance and exit onto Brookwood Drive in the Brookwood subdivision, and a right-out exit only onto Route 301. After discussions with VDOT, this design is acceptable with no traffic studies required. The applicant has also downsized the structure since the original application to 9,560 square feet. Since the last Planning Commission meeting, Caroline County Public Schools and Rural Family Development have had a meeting in order to facilitate a better working relationship. They'll be working together in the future to better coordinate needs between the school system and Head Start. Rural Family Development is still committed to the construction of a standalone structure to house Head Start, but it's come to an agreement with Caroline County Public Schools regarding the 2021-2022 school year. Attachment A to the staff report contains materials received since the last meeting. There is a revised general development plan showing the new entrances and exits. Information provided from Caroline County Public Schools regarding the meeting with Rural Family Development, and a letter in support of the request. To focus the discussion, the county attorney has provided a statement that Head Start is a preschool. The way that they are classified is not under the Department of Education, which is why they're going for a daycare here. The focus of this is not Head Start. It's to look at the zoning for daycare on this piece of property. And so county attorney just wanted to focus the direction, that that's what you guys are hearing tonight.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pennington, the VDOT, what was their recommendation on the entrance-exit on 301 again?
VDOT's recommendation and the county recommendation is that the full entrance and exit be through the Brookwood subdivision in an already dedicated right-of-way. VDOT is acceptable to a right-out only onto 301 to allow for extra exit, to not have to go back through Brookwood. But anything other than an exit-only, then they wanted a traffic study done to determine a turn lane warrants.
So there would be no entry or exit point from 301, even for staff use?
It'd be exit-only.
Exit only.
Exit-only onto 301. And there's no crossover there, so it's right turn only onto 301. If you need to go back towards town on 301, you would need to go back through Brookwood to where the crossover is.
Very good, thank you, sir.
No questions?
Yeah. Chairman, I'm reading this thing. The entrance to get into the property.
At the existing Brookwood subdivision, is the map still there? So if you look at the GDP, the Brookwood subdivision is north of the property, and there is already a dedicated turn lane, right and left turn lanes off 301 into the Brookwood subdivision. And there is a dedicated right-of-way through the Brookwood subdivision to this property for use as an entrance and exit. So to enter or exit the facility, you would turn at the Brookwood subdivision and then make the first left to come down to this property. To exit, you could go to 301 and leave on 301 also if you're heading south. But those are the two entrances and exits. So to enter, you have to come through the Brookwood subdivision and make that first left next to the commercial lot.
Now, is there any controversy for them?
No, I've spoken to the developers of Brookwood, and this is a dedicated right-of-way, and so it's designed to be used that way. Brookwood's okay with it. Technically, it's not their decision to be okay with it, but they are okay with the situation.
In other words, VDOT has approved everything that they wanted to?
If we were to get to site plan, VDOT could approve this, yes.
One other question, sir. This building is designed and will be built as a daycare facility. If something happens in the future that Head Start or the churches decide that we're not going to stay here, the county is going to be stuck with a building that is designed solely as a daycare facility, unless interior modifications were made, I would assume. And I'm just wondering if this is a proper location for a daycare facility? And I'm just wondering if it's in the best interest of the children, and I know that this is not part of the question, but is it a good place for the children to be? You know, that's a debatable question. We could go back and work on that.
I believe that, you know, that's why we're here at the meeting, is to decide if it's a proper location or not. But to speak to the earlier part of your question, should Rural Family Development cease to seek Head Start and no longer ran Head Start, then the building could still be utilized as a daycare. If it does not get used as a daycare for two years, then it loses a special exception, and it's just a building on residential property.
Now, from my understanding, looking at the proper fencing, the different areas.
The Department of Education has certain rules on fencing of playground equipment and facilities. I'm not fully aware of all those regulations that the Department of Education has for schools and daycares, school-type systems. But they would be enforced, and they would have to have those in place for them to operate.
Are they going to be able to do that?
I believe that would be a question for the applicant. I believe that would be a question for the applicant. Michelle, would you like to come up?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, we do have fencing included for our playground, um, that is already included in our cost estimates for this project. So we will have a an a fenced-in playground that is secure for our students. It is part of our regulations under the uniform guidance of, um, well, how we need to structure the facility, and it'll also be looked at when we go through the licensing process.
Now, your fencing, is it a six-foot? Is your fencing with a six-foot?
He said help.
Six-foot, um, did we put eight-foot or six-foot in? Six-foot, yes. Yes, a minimum of six-foot is required, yeah.
That would be in all the areas that they, the children would be in?
Yes.
So will you, well, there would be, would you have anything going to the front that faces 301? Anything going that way? Your fencing is is it going to be, uh, at the beginning of 301 and back around to stop any kids from coming in that area? The area that he's going to travel in, it would be the area that he's going in and out for playgrounds, all right?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
I believe I believe he asked, is, uh, the fencing going to keep all the children away from the 301 side of the property and, uh, keep them safe from the major, major road?
Yes.
So the playing area is, uh, how long does that, I'm looking at, I think, I don't know how many kids in my head right now, but, uh, the playing area, that fencing that goes around to the play area?
Yes.
Okay, that would be where your, uh, apparatuses are?
The playground structures?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. This land is being obtained as I understand it by way of a grant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Who would be the owners of the land and the building?
Our agency would be the owners.
Your agency?
Yes.
Specifically?
Rural Family Development.
RFD. Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Should I make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, whereas special exemption request SPEX 02-2020 for Rural Family Development appears to be generally inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the denial of this request, I recommend that SPEX 02-2020 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of denial. A second.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz made a motion for denial.
A second.
All in favor of denial?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, can we do a roll call vote? Because I'm not, I'm not sure I heard the votes there. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, motion to denial.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Smith? Mr. Mr. Minor? Mr. Dudley?
Yep.
Mr. McKenzie, I need some, uh, clarification on a roll call vote for to move to the board with recommendation of denial that went two to two?
Yeah, that that vote fails to, um, carry, uh, without a majority. Um, so there's been no, there's been no approved recommendation. So as it stands right now, you have no recommendation to the board.
Does it, does it still go to the board with no recommendation, or do we need another motion?
Um, I mean, you could, you you can certainly, if someone wants to move, uh, for approval, um, somewhat, you you're entitled to do that. That's a separate motion. Um, and, uh, you would have another vote on that. Um, and if that were split, like the motion for denial, then then the planning commission could forward this without any recommendation, um, having, uh, being unable to pass a motion, um, in support or, uh, opposed.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's back to you. It it, well, well, it seems, it seems like our options are to accept another motion, which is going to turn out the same unless somebody switches sides, or to make a motion to send it to the board with no recommendation, make a motion for that, or I make a motion to defer again. So it seems like those are our options.
And and I could, I would add that certainly if you defer, um, and, uh, there's a a meeting with, uh, any more, if if one or more of the other planning commissioners were to attend, that could certainly change the the voting dynamics, and you may be able to, um, pass a vote, um, if you were to defer. Um, but as it stands right now, without a majority, you can't either, the the planning commission cannot pass a motion.
So I make a, can I make a recommendation that we send it to the Board of Supervisors without no recommendation?
A second.
All in favor of sending the application to the Board of Supervisors with no recommendation? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Case will move to the Board of Supervisors with no recommendation from the planning commission.
We now open for a public hearing. Do we get a public hearing protocol?
Mr. Chairman, your next two items on your agenda are public hearings for, um, Commonwealth Fair as an event, um, AKA Virginia Farm Bureau Holdings Corporation Incorporated. They are requesting two different items. One is a rezoning amendment, RZ 01-2021, uh, which would request, uh, amendments to, uh, a number of existing proffers, uh, related to, um, the previously approved, uh, rezoning uh, on tax parcels 100-8-1A, 1A1, 1A2, 100-82, a portion of 100-8-3, and 101-8-100B. The subject property is zoned, uh, planned recreation and entertainment. Um, and originally, uh, had a number of proffers approved with the original state fair of Virginia, uh, and which was subsequently modified several years ago. Your second public hearing is the companion document to that rezoning, which is, uh, the special exception permits issued for that property. SPEX 01-2021, uh, on the same properties by the same owner, also proposes to amend a number of conditions related to, um, the various special exception permits uh, that have been approved on that property. Uh, among the changes would be to, uh, allow, um, uh, additional, uh, time for fireworks, uh, expand the, uh, potential for campground, uh, use on the property. Uh, would also allow, um, a a potential for a hotel or motel on the property, uh, which is something that the county has been trying to work with, uh, owners of the state fair for for a number of years. All of these amendments are are designed to to provide, uh, Meadow Event Park with the opportunity to expand, um, uh, their venue and and to attract more business to their venue, um, which is the purpose for the public hearing on on these two two items tonight. Um, my suggestion would be that you, uh, the hold the public hearing, uh, on these two items. Um, let the applicant speak and and any public speak, and then we can talk specifically about, uh, any conditions or proffers, uh, after that that hearing. Mr. McKenzie, are you okay with one public hearing? Since the art, the rezoning and the special exception are are so closely aligned with separate motions?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yes, I I I don't see any issue with, um, with having one public hearing on the the, these are amendments to the underlying rezoning and special exception, but I do think we should vote separately to to ensure clarity.
Uh, this, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, we do have two, um, letters that were provided by, um, adjacent property owners, uh, who have expressed concerns about the proposed amendments. Um, the issues generally, um, uh, are concerned about, uh, the the fireworks or the potential to expand, uh, fireworks uses at the site. Um, also, there are some concerns about, uh, uh, noise related to to concerts that, uh, that had been held there uh, and and concerns about, uh, potential for, uh, increased, uh, fire hazards related to, uh, timber conditions and the, um, uh, potential for fireworks.
Mr. Chairman, in addition, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chris. Uh, in addition to the letters that Mr. Fincham just spoke about, um, I received two phone calls this week from citizens regarding this case. Uh, both of them are adjacent property owners directly next to the Meadow Event Park. Uh, both of them spoke in favor of Meadow Event Park and and what they're trying to do there.
Uh, and I was just going to chime in and say, uh, procedurally, if you do want to go ahead and hold, um, one public hearing for the rezoning and special exception amendment applications, um, I would, uh, recommend that you increase the time allotted, um, so that that each, you know, member of the public coming forward, as opposed to the standard three minutes, could have up to six minutes since they'd be addressing two applications. Um, and similarly, the applicant would have his time doubled, um, if he, if we're going to have the presentation be made on the application at the same time, just so no one gets short stripped in that regard.
When you come up, we give them the application for 15 minutes allowed. That'd be good?
Uh, Mr. McKenzie suggested we switch it to 30 minutes, and so we'll give, uh, the applicant 30 minutes to give a presentation if they need that long.
I really don't need 30 minutes. I didn't prepare that much, but, um, thank you all very much. And, um, my goal tonight is I want to explain what kind of led to what seems like a lot of change. Um, and just kind of share a little bit about what the, what my perspective is on things. So what I find ironic is the first time I landed here in front of the planning commission body, I had just arrived in Caroline County and inherited a special exemption change that dealt with fireworks. And let's just say it was a a fast and furious introduction. Um, it was not easy, and at that point in time, um, we pulled that discussion off of the table for the expansion of it. So fast forward, that was 2015. So I've been here now, uh, about six years, six and a half years. Um, we had a very rough start that year with the hurricane. Then we had pretty much four solid years in a row. Um, really good fairs, kind of growing the events on the property, and really taking time to figure out who we were and how we should be operating and what makes the most sense in Caroline County, and trying to just learn the the area and the region and the culture of the operation. Um, last year, obviously, is, I don't have to repeat what last year was like for a property like ours. Um, we, this time last year, we basically had to shut everything down. Um, we worked with two employees until about July, and then we started bringing a few folks back. We we went from 15 full-time down to two employees, built back up to five full-time. Um, canceled the state fair, which, um, attributed to 80% of our revenue for the year. Um, so it was a very rough year. Um, we ended up in the fall amazingly when we, we encourage, I encouraged my crew to focus on what what we could do and and stop focusing on on all of the things we couldn't do. And so we we managed to do some things in the fall, and, um, we made about 56% of our revenue for the year in the last three months of the year. Um, we did the light show in December, had no idea how the public would react to a drive-through light show, and it doubled in car count. And it really, so, so it's been a roller coaster year. We've hit, kind of, you think you've hit bottom, but then you go through a pandemic in the event industry, and you realize you you found a new bottom, and now you know how to, you figure out what you can do to get out of it. So in the winter, um, I, I think the fact that there were, um, you had two comments that came back in the technical review. One thing that I wanted to share with you tonight, and I'll get to those points in a minute. I think it's important to understand what I do day to day and and who I report to in my job. Um, the Meadow Event Park is owned by Virginia Farm Bureau, as you all know. And so in that role, I report to at least three different board segments, um, some crossover in people. Um, Farm Bureau has roughly 128,000 members spread across the state of Virginia. They have, um, a president in every county, and our Caroline County president, who serves on our state fair board, is here tonight, Mr. Broaddus. So every move I make at the property, I know going into that, that not only is our reputation at stake in the county, I answer to a lot of people at a very high level and across the state of Virginia. And if we don't operate at a very high professional level, it is going to impact Virginia Farm Bureau, not only the the membership side, but the insurance side. So there really, for our operation, we're very unique. Uh, I don't have, there really is no other state fair operation in the country that operates like I do, um, and has the various boards and answers to a corporate owner. So I'll share that with you because I want you to understand completely that, um, what I do there impacts a lot of other people, and I have a lot of people looking at what I do, and there's a lot of oversight. Um, we, two things I brought tonight. Um, if we wanted to take the whole 30 minutes, we could go through them, but I'm I'm joking. So we have an emergency operations manual that's about 70 pages long, and this one I grabbed was 2016. It's vetted every year. Every, uh, partner that we operate with has a stake in that. We write it, we rewrite it. It will be rewritten again after we survived last year and tried to figure out how to stage a state fair during a pandemic. But, um, there's a lot of regulation and structure here. And then we have roughly this document. Anyone who wants to do business with our property gets a copy of what we call a promoter handbook. It spells out rules, licenses, what has to be done to comply with county regulations, whether it's fire, uh, tent inspections, taxes, it's all here. Um, so So I wanted to share those, there's a lot of structure with what we do, and we're not, we certainly would not be, would not be prudent for us to operate without, I would call it, good risk management practices. It's not smart in today's day and time, and we're inviting thousands of people to our property, so we have to do it the right way. And that's how I have, that's the culture that I think I've shared with our operation. So I want to go back to the technical review. You got two comments, I think, that were mentioned by Mr. Fincham. What we've tried to do with our safety committee here throughout the years, it's a conglomerate of all of the agencies that have a stake in what we do and how we do it. We meet three, usually four times a year. We have great meetings, we had one today. We have a lot of back and forth dialogue on what's happening at the property, what we're doing, what's changed. So, and early on, in December, I looked at our proffers as they existed, and so I think it's fair to point out, a lot of what you've got in that long document is simply noting that we had a name change. In the winter of 2019, we were absorbed by Virginia Farm Bureau Holding Corporation, so the company name Commonwealth Fairs and Events no longer exists. So part of this effort for me was just to get, let's get some things cleaned up. So the name change was one of the key elements. A lot of the original proffers, as they were drafted for the fair to start up here and for the property to operate, were drafted because no one knew how it was going to go. No one, you didn't know, it was, it's a long, you know, when you look, it's over a decade ago, and there'd been lots of things that happened at the former location that people worried about. And so I looked through the document, I had a meeting with Mr. Fincham in early December, and I shared, you know, we need to update our name. We have things in the proffers that were already mandated in state and county code that we're already complying with, and we have to day to day to operate. So you kind of, you have a rule in the proffers, and then you have code that you're also following. And the other part of it was, you know, what was in the proffers at the point in time that they were written that was so tied to the construction that it was very specific about how the tunnel was built. So I tried to go back through the proffers. Part of these changes are things that really aren't applicable now because they were tied to how the operation was kind of, how the operation was proffered to build the property. So I looked at it from those angles, identified areas. I looked at two or three areas that, you know, and I'm going to, I'll talk about camping. So I've, I came to this board, this commission, in 2015. The other part of the fireworks discussion was camping. Since then, we've had multiple successful recreational vehicle rallies with absolutely no issue. So what has happened, out of, out of the growth of our property and our events, we've gained people who know where the Meadow Event Park is, and they, they also drive from north to south or south to north on 95. And our location right off 95 means that if they attended a rally here, we get phone calls, and they want to, they want, they just want to do an overnight. So as the proffers are written right now, one of, one of the things that stands out to me is we can do camping events, we have camping for the fair, it is in demand. If you follow the RV industry, manufacturers can't keep up with production, and, but if we had someone who wanted to spend the night at our property and camp for one night, I'm not proffered to do that. And we have a, we have a permanent campground. So I think we've arrived at a time where, in that particular segment, I don't see the issue there. There would be times of year where we can't accommodate that because of other events, but right now, we're sending that person across the line into Hanover to the campground at King's Dominion more often than not, because they're probably in the vicinity of the exit 98. The other area that stands out is, well, I want to, I want to talk about the two things that came up in the technical review. So the proffer discussion about including Caroline County in all advertising. I was given, well, I think it was during the 2019 state fair, in the middle of the fair, I had got an email from the tourism office with a complaint that we had not included the Caroline County logo in one of our television ads. So obviously, if, you know, we were in the middle of the state fair, I couldn't really stop to deal with, with that, or I couldn't change anything. But for this purpose tonight, and on that particular subject, I want, I do want to read just a brief kind of commentary that I shared late in that, late that fall, and I'm happy to send a copy of this letter as well. So I shared with Mr. Cully, with Gary Wilson, with Kathy Beard and the tourism office at that time, the proffer that was drafted regarding advertising was 14 years before 2019. And from my standpoint, it was obvious the intent was that the county was proud to have the state fair in the county and wanted to gain positive branding in the regional market. And it was, it was a way to get the county's name out, and I understood that because you've got something that's going to bring people, and you want to be part of that, and you're proud of it. So I wasn't here then, and I don't really understand, I don't know what their marketing campaigns were, but here we are in 2019, when the proffer was written, there weren't things like Facebook ads, there wasn't digital media. What we do now, and I've been in this business now 33 years, and what I'm doing today doesn't look like what I did 33 years ago. So advertising has changed, there are things that it's very viable to do to keep the county's name out there. We, actually, I shared with them at that point in time, we really, we put the county, shared the county logo in 100,000 state fair programs, we have it, it went in the Richmond Times Dispatch part of those ads. So I shared those examples, and I think it's important to talk about this piece. It's not, I can assure you that we understand why it's important to have that logo in what we do. It's on our website, so, and I, actually, it struck me a week ago, my email signature, and I, and I send and receive thousands of emails, and right now with five full-time people, I deal with most, the majority of our large property rentals. My email signature has always had the Meadow Event Park logo, Caroline County, Virginia in it. We include it in our press releases, we're proud of that as well, you know, we are proud of how we've grown and how we operate. That particular, you know, item that was presented in the technical review is just not, it's a broad brush to say that we would include that in every advertising piece that we do in a digital world. It's very, you know, it's just challenging. So we have, we've certainly embraced it, and we try to do as much as we can to share where we are and not just who we are. The other technical review item was by Chief Loftus that talked about some of the strikes relating to public safety, and he and I have had multiple discussions. I actually went to him back in December because I care about his opinion because the public safety piece and emergency services is really core to what we do. So what came out of all of that, and I have no issue with his suggestion at all because I think it clears a lot of things up. Right now, what promoters who come to our property, they kind of have a set of rules that we have to share with them to operate under. Then if, if we're operating the state fair and our upcoming Virginia Farm Festival, we have, we have some rules that are a little bit different. So we've got two things happening, it's a lot to keep up with. I have no issue with his suggestion, and again, we talked today at the safety committee that what would simplify everything is to come up with a plan, and what he and I talked about was just agreeing that if an event attendance is kind of, it's something you predict based on what you think might happen because you really don't know, given weather factors and such. But to address his concerns would be to just have some kind of special event permit that if we anticipate an event or based on historic records, we're going to have 2,500 people at one time on the property, there has to be a special event permit filled out. I think that is very clear, and I don't have a problem with that for what we're doing. I think it's good for us to actually annually tell the county, here's what's happening with the state fair of Virginia. I do that, just because I think it's important to go to the agencies that are involved, to our safety committee, to the board of supervisors, and share any updates. Certainly, if I was going to change something, which we did two or three years ago, we did, we changed the layout, you know. So it's not, that's not a bad thing, and I think it brings a lot of clarity to a lot of maybe ambiguity or just treating parts of our entity differently. I think it would be good, and I have no issue with that. I think the other thing that I will mention before I stop is just that the, what I hope people look at, and I'm going to talk about fireworks because that seems to be, you know, something that triggers a lot of things. I have, what my goal is with some of these changes is not, I have no plan right now, we have no plan to shoot fireworks during the state fair, we don't have the money. You know, we're trying to get an event off the ground this year, and fireworks roughly cost $1,000 a minute if you're going to shoot big fireworks. So for us right now, it's not something we're focusing on, and a permit has to be applied for to even do that. So if we were interested in doing that, we have to file a permit with the fire and rescue. So we also have a neighbor across the county line who, and I don't know where they stand on it, I know they're opening, King's Dominion's set to open May 22nd, I don't know what their plan is with that. But my, my goal with this is, is not to rule out things and a set of proffers that might be viable when you've already got a process in place in the county to either allow something to go or not go that's already existing through things like a fireworks permit. And there were a couple of other instances, instances in there that were similar to that. So I would, I would just ask, I know that it's, it's a lot of administrative tedious work that's in there, and I know you got two comments back. I would ask that you, when you look at our operation, you keep in mind what our track record has been for the past five or six years. We really have had no, we've had parking issues during the state fair because we, we've had rain and had more people than what we anticipated. So the issues we have had were not caused because we operated in a, in a manner that was not at a high level, they were issues that we simply didn't anticipate, and they happen, and we try to remedy and get through them. But we do, we care about how we operate, we have a good track record, we're not asking for anything that I deem controversial because now is not the time to do that. We need to, we need to get up and running, we need to have the state fair, we need to have as many events as we have. We're already, we're actually, we're doing okay right now, and because of the expense reductions that we immediately did in early 2020, we're ahead of where we were last year just because of controlling some of our cost pieces. So I would ask, I'm happy when the time is right to come back up and answer questions, and I thank you for your time this evening and for your attention.
Open the public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Buchanan, and I actually own two pieces of property adjacent to the fair, the Meadow Event Park. One is my property right on the corner of Route 30 and 652. I feel like we have to do this annually with a special activities permit. The other is my horse farm that is on the ridge up behind the Meadow Event Park. And on that particular piece of property across, we have some adjacent horse farms. And I'm not sure if he was here back the first year they did do fireworks, but air problem with fireworks, it was so loud coming up that hill that it actually shook the windows in our house. And it is not feasible or practical to go in when you have 30 to $60,000 horses and up to $100,000 horses in your barn, a stable full, to sedate them when you're not sure when fireworks are going off. The fair is a little different from us than King's Dominion. We have fireworks every single night when King's Dominion's in, but it's across the river, it does not come up the hill the way those sounds are. I want to make it clear, I want the fair to be very, very successful, but as far as having problems with the fair and having called y'all to actually address an issue a couple of years ago, when they had the parking issue, my driveway was parked three wide, six feet. The state police told me when I asked them about it how they, we can move them. I had a sick grandma, I had to use a back drive that my car could not get out of to get to. They told me that I had to pay to have each vehicle towed, that it was not their problem, it was the fair's problem. I called the fair office, and they told me it was not their problem, it was the state police's problem, the traffic control. Now, I put barrels up at the end of our road, every year during state, I let the state fair, I let the police sit in the end of my driveway, I move the barrel when I come in and come out. That's how we handle that issue. I just feel like every time I've called down there to make a complaint, and I'm not trying to be Negative Nancy, but when the rally does come in, I just talked to somebody a couple of weeks ago, they had 16 RVs come in there. Of course, it seemed, I run my business out of my home, I have it zoned, I did my little thing through the county and all my business permits. When they do the week or two-week-long camping rally, I pay $170 a month for satellite internet. My internet crashes. I can't do anything when they're in, and I can tell when every one of them go to bed down there during the camping rally because the internet fires up about 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, I can actually sit there and get some work done. That's not convenient for me, having two pieces of property adjacent to the fair. I do not mind the camping stuff as far as, but they have to, like I called last week, and I said, if y'all are getting ready to have another camping rally, are y'all going to bring in additional like cell towers or something like y'all do for the fair just to kind of help with the burden because really this is like, you know, I pay a lot of money for my satellite, and it just goes down. That's one big issue I have with that. As far as having the campground and expanding and all that stuff and having concerts, I don't even mind the concerts. You know, the noise is bad where I live, I mean, you know, but that's okay, I don't mind that, and the traffic I can deal with, but the fireworks are my biggest concern with the horses because that's not something that we can dial down and control, and we don't, who's going to be responsible, you know, for air horses getting hurt in their stalls, or whether or not they're out and about? The other thing is, how do we know that a special event's coming up where they are going to have fireworks? I mean, how are they going to plan on notifying us as, you know, residents right there? You mean, I have, I have dogs, I have horses, there's a lot of people in the area that have animals. I mean, how would, do y'all, do y'all have any answers on to how they would notify us? Like, that's my biggest concern. If it's putting a little sign out in front, the little zoning signs, they are never up in front of the fair when there's a zoning thing, we have to get it by word of mouth or by a letter that we get from y'all because they're out there, but they're always laid over. So, you know, we can't, that's not dependable. That's, that's my thoughts. I mean, I'm not trying to be, I want to see the fair, the Farm Bureau, of course, I'm a horse person, I think, you know, horse shows are great down there, activity's great, would love to see the fair booming, but, you know, not at the cost of injuring some of my animals. So I guess that's my main, main issue. And I think there should need, and there needs to be something more open too about, maybe they can do it through the fair itself, but when residents have issues, I feel like we just kind of get the go-around. That's all.
Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Anybody else want to speak? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to give the applicant a few minutes to, to address any questions that may have been asked?
You, you have, you have 20 minutes if you want to address any of the comments made during public comment.
And I, I want to address two things and it's funny, here I am again, and I completely understand your concern about fireworks. I do. I, I, it was the first thing I dealt with when I got here and that is not, there's nothing on the table that if, if I never shoot fireworks right now, that's not my priority. So I, I, I do hear that loud and clear and not only, I've received emails as well on that issue. What bothers me, two things, I think, you know, if, I, we also had the call about the, one of my staffers spoke about the problem it seems with internet service or satellite service. So we got a Comcast service, a fiber service that ran to our property two years ago, I think 2019. They finally ran it across the river and, and it, it ends at the Meadow Event Park. The issue of internet service and cell, cell, cell tower capacity, two, well, a year and a half ago before the pandemic, there, there is a T-Mobile tower somewhere in the process that would help with cellular activity. The other part of it would be to try to get Comcast or a provider to run hardline better internet service in that part of the county because it, the fiber, as I understand it, ends pretty much with the Meadow Event Park. On our property, we have eight new kind of internal Verizon towers that boost cell service throughout the property when we have a large crowd and that kind of replaces the old mobile towers that are there. And I think the, the issue, I acknowledge the issue when the, the parking, I, I mentioned that before I sat down, we did have a parking issue that year. And I don't mind saying publicly that, you know, passing the buck is never a good thing and it doesn't speak well of either our operation or the state police at that time, but we had a real issue on our hands. Did, did it all go well? No. I've dealt with some neighboring property owners about getting folks turning around in their driveway during the fair and I've called Sheriff Lippa out to help with some of those issues. So I acknowledge that that is not a perfect, you know, it's not perfect and when you are right by our property, that issues like that are going to come up. And I will take the time after to talk to Ms. Buchanan and learn more about what we can do to fix those issues because I don't want to be, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, she understands some of our issues as well. We have five people right now in our operation and probably, actually, I'm wrong, we have six now. I don't always know everything that's going on, but I can assure you that it's important to me that when we do have issues, they get addressed. We, it seems like a while, but we, at one point in time early on, we maintained a community, a, a list of neighbors and email addresses. So one thing I will do is, is reinstate that and not just reinstate it, but we, we have all of our events on our Meadow Event Park calendar page, but I will make an effort to, as things are kind of ramping back up and getting busier, to update the neighbor list and stay in better communication with what's happening real close to the property. One interesting thing that has come out of the pandemic that, I'm actually, I never thought I would say this, but part of that parking issue that caused so much issue was, it was a sunny day. I think we had had rain before, so we opened and a lot of people came, more than we could handle. Once that's in motion, it's very hard to stop, but out of the pandemic and all of the focus on monitoring crowd capacities is I do think we're looking seriously at limiting capacity. It doesn't do anybody any good for our operation, for us, for our neighbors, for the state police, to have too many people and not be able to manage it. So we already are going to need to do that to be able to distance and to deal with some of the issues coming out of the pandemic, but I think it will also solve an operational issue and that we have to be realistic about what we can handle on a weekend and what our parking lots will handle. And then we may have to change that if we, we have a lot of grasslots. So when it rains for a long period of time, we have issues. So we are looking at that capacity issue, which should help us proactively avoid a sunny day when everyone comes and they all want to be there at the same time and we simply can't handle it. So I think that's all I have to say on that particular issue unless we want to go into questions right now. Do you want me to stay put?
Just, just stay close. They'll have questions for staff and you, so just, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a few questions I would like to go into if you don't mind. How often do you anticipate a fireworks display or show occurring?
It's, it's not something, so the proffers, as they're currently written, I think I'm right in that there, it's limited to two during the week of the State Fair. Am I correct? I believe I'm correct on that.
I believe so.
They're not allowed at any other time and I think when I, I think in 2015 that what I inherited was a, a request to expand. So you could, you could do two during the fair and then you could do two additional during the year. Occasionally, we get requests from wedding clients who want to shoot fireworks after a wedding. We, very rarely do we get, because we do so many of our own events, it's just, it's not something that we spend a lot of time on. During the State Fair, we actually, I mean, we have no plans to shoot them right now because if we're on a weekend and the parking lot's full, we have nowhere to shoot fireworks from. And again, I, I go back to cost, they're very expensive. My, my point in the proffer change or edit was to not, you know, there are, there is a fireworks permit and process and I don't know whether it covers, I know you have to apply for them. I don't know what the authority is there. If someone said, oh, why are they doing this again? You know, if, if Chief Loftus can say, we're not going to grant that because you've, you're being a nuisance. I really, I don't know the protocol on that. It's just to, there is a process in place for someone to have oversight on that. Given where we are right now, it's, it's not something that, right now, I'm focused on getting the State Fair up and running some of the concert series that's already been approved. We, we've got to stay in business and so fireworks are not something we, we really have on our radar. It just happens to be part of the, one of the elements in the proffers that seem to be written very specifically.
I understand that. And that was my point was about the concerts. And I don't know if there, there is a protocol in place, I'm sure that there is, but some of the bands or concerts, they like to have a little fireworks go off at the end of their performances.
So in the festival permit application, that question was asked and addressed in that. The, there are no like ground fireworks displays planned or allowed. There are, there's a technical word, but basically onstage, like you'll see a flash, not loud, but a, a stage production type.
Right.
It is called a fireworks, but it's called something
Proximal.
A little different.
Prox, it's proximal versus aerial.
Yes. And those, anybody that would want to do that onstage still has to actually file, that has to go through Fire and Rescue, through the fire, the fireworks permit process.
Very good. As to Mrs. Buchanan's internet problem, I don't know if she has the capability to her ISP to have a pass code or, you know, that, that's something that might alleviate some of the problems with that. But we certainly want to see the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds, Meadow Event Park prosper and, and do well. Our wife and I are members of our bureau, so, you know, we're, we're there. But certainly, you're not trying to get away from the Safety Committee, are you?
No. We, we, we meet, we had our first meeting today. The Safety Committee is still in there written. What, what I am asking to have, some of the Safety Committee language was drafted for the initial startup. And for the, here, you know, the fair is coming, this committee needs to approve the plan and here we are 15 to 20 years almost down the road and we, we meet four times a year. We go over everything we're doing and that's one of the, it's one of the most valuable things that we invest our time in and they weigh in on the emergency plan. It, it's VDOT, County Fire and Rescue, County Sheriff's Department, State Police, Virginia Health Department, my own, I have three board members that serve on it. RMC, it does a lot of security pieces. Our emergency services company who currently operates at the Meadow.
I'm sure it's, it's very similar to the protocol that King's Dominion.
It is, it is. And we, I mean, it's, it's instrumental from an insurance standpoint for us to even purchase liability insurance. We have to prove that, that we have certain protocols in place and, and we, I fill out mounds of questionnaires on what we do from a risk management standpoint and for the fair in particular, because that's where a lot of the focus is. Two, two, from 17 to 19, two or three days ahead of the fair, we have a, a risk management auditor who shows up at the Meadow from our insurance company, looks at everything we do, tent stakes, roadways, holes. And we've had in those three years, maybe two, two or three things pointed out and, and really good, strong reviews as far as that piece. And so, again, it's, it's not in our best interest to be sloppy about what we do. It simply is not.
And I think the only other thing I had, at, at first when I started going over the, the application, I saw about the advertisement or portion of it. I, I got to wondering, gosh, did we make them mad and they want a divorce from us? And, you know, but, you know, maybe there's a way you can come to an agreement with the economic development as to what does not have to bear the county logo or whatever has been done in the past.
Well, we've had
I don't know if it's a burden or a problem.
It, it can be an issue when you have 15 corporate sponsors and you're doing a 15-second television ad and you're trying to get all their logos on there or, it depends on what you're doing, but we, we've had a lot of discussion on it. And it's important to me that we use that logo wherever we can and we do that. So I think if there is a middle ground on that particular issue, it simply is where applicable, but it's not my intent to not be proud of where we're at or not, I mean, we are in Caroline County, that's not changing. And it's special because we're, you know, we're the birthplace of Secretariat. There's a lot of history and we have a section of the property on the National Historic Register. And that's important to Caroline County. So I think, I mean, honestly, you know, if you want to go back to day one, it was not being included in all advertising for a long while and it was being included where, where it could be put, but we've, we've made a very strong effort, particularly with facility rental pieces, getting the large AKC dog shows to the property and the RV events and all of those pieces. Any proposal that goes out features where we're at, what the setting is, what's north and south of us, but, you know, it's, it's not something we're trying to never do. It's just, I think there's a reasonable approach and the advertising world is, is not an easy one to navigate right now because who knows what, who is watching, so.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one question, the staff of Marlene? Marlene and I traded emails today. Chief Lost, and she spoke to, to her discussions with Chief Loftus and I, I think everybody's on board with the idea of the special events permit. I had proposed some language for consideration in the special exception permit. Item number three, major entertainment use is not included in the fairground. If you all approve the, the four deletions, it would basically leave one sentence. And, and I have suggested that, that sentence be modified to the effect that pursuant to Chapter 49, or just say pursuant to the Code of Caroline County, festival and/or special event permits shall be required for any festivals or special events required by the code. That way, we amend the county code to include the special events permits that everybody, it, it would be a better way than some of the language that's in, in the, in the, in the zoning and the special exception provisions right now. So I would ask Ms. Joel Eve if she is, would, would consider that, allowing us to make that amendment. And, and I think that, that ties everything together with, with public safety, with what we've all discussed about the special events permit and helps clean up that language and get it out.
Yeah, I, I agree and that's what I, I think I pointed out earlier. It's not trying to avoid doing things without following the rules. There are a lot of rules and they contradict each other and they're different for what we do than what promoters do. And sometimes I have to back up and read things that I've read every year for six years to say, all right, we're doing this right. Anything that can make that process consistent and file a permit, you know, I would, I think that is, would be very helpful for everyone involved, not, not just the fair, but I, you know, it would be nice to be able to tell a promoter, who wants to do something in our property, here's your permit. Not, well, this is your rule if you're under this amount of people and, you know, it is, it's a lot and it has been, it's hard to communicate to people, so I'm fine with that. I, I have no issue with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are we voting on both of these at the same time?
No, you'll, you'll have to do two motions, one for the rezoning and one for the special exception.
Yeah, and members of the Planning Commission, I would add that, yeah, I think even in advance, make sure that in advance of your vote, you're clear which, which application you're taking up and discuss each application separately. So you have an amendment to a rezoning for you, an amendment to special condition, a special exception condition before you. And I would discuss each separately just to ensure clarity and because, as you know, the proffers associated with a rezoning need to be voluntary from the applicant and can't be proposed by the planning commission. And so I think it's important that you discuss them separately because they do need to be traded somewhat differently under the code. And so, I think it's important that you discuss them separately, because they do need to be traded somewhat differently under the code.
So, we can make a recommend, I'm in our motion that profit amendment?
Do any of the commissioners have any other questions that they want to ask the applicant or staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please. Whereas rezoning request RZ 012021 for Meadow Event Park appears to generally, appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map, and whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of this request, I recommend that RZ 012021 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Schwartz, just to clarify, that was for the rezoning, correct?
That was on the rezoning, yes, sir.
Next up is SPEX-012001, staff report.
Mr. Bonner, we combine the staff report in the public comment, or public comment period, so you guys can discuss it, or make a motion, or ask questions.
With this motion, do we include Mr. Fincham's set about the permits?
You may include that.
I'll make a motion for a special exception request for SPEX 012021. Appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, good zoning practice has warranted approval of this request. I recommend that SPEX 012021 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. You're going to have to state what those-
As amended.
As amended, okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment for Ms. Hannah's benefit? Ms. Hannah, as we start working on the special events permits, the language for the county code, we will address notification as part of that process.
Next thing on our agenda is in it, on ours?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is requesting authorization to advertise two text amendments for a public hearing at the April 22 planning commission meeting. The First Amendment modifies the definition of subdivision, as found in the subdivision ordinance, so that property acquired or created by the Board of Supervisors does not constitute a subdivision with regard to future division of the property. The Second Amendment exempts public facilities or utilities of Caroline County from the lot size and other requirements as found in Article 12, Section 2 of the zoning ordinance. At the March 9 board meeting, Board of Supervisors meeting, the board referred the proposed amendments to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation to the board. And the amendments are on the back of the memo page for you.
Members of the board, let me give you a, probably a good example of justification for these amendments. When we're extending our county utility system, occasionally, we have to install a pump station where we have a force main, and that pump station is to provide adequate pressure for that force main. Typically, the utility easements themselves may, for the lines, are just easements, but on occasion, we may actually have to acquire property for a pump station, a wellhouse, or something like that. We've been fortunate that many of our facilities are, like, Haymount, oh, not Haymount, Ladysmith Village, Pendleton, where it's a planned development district, and there's no minimum lot size. But if we were by chance in a rural area, where we've got rural preservation zoning, it really doesn't make sense to acquire a 10-acre lot for a pump station that only needs to be, for example, 50 by 50. So, the purpose is really to allow our public utilities and facilities to be constructed where we have to go to a property owner and acquire property to not have that count against their subdivision rights when it's a county-initiated acquisition. So, that's really the basis of the request.
Where you say amendments located?
On the back of the memo that I just read, it's a memo from Mr. Fincham, the planning commission. So, the amendments are there. What we're asking is for the chairman to authorize us to advertise for public hearing. And since you're the vice chair and the acting chairman tonight, we're asking you for authorization. I don't believe we needed a motion to authorize advertising for text amendments. I believe we just need the chairman to say that it's okay. Is that correct, Mr. Fincham?
Norm, I think a motion is probably good. That's how we handle it at the board, so.
Yeah, I think I agree with Mr. Fincham. You might as well just make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we advertise for public hearing TXT 012021, subdivision ordinance, section two definitions of hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend that we authorize for advertising for public hearing TXT 022021, zoning ordinance, Article 7, Section 2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Last week, last month, we discussed about sending something to the board for the football field.
Mr. Dudley, that's already been forwarded to the board through the CIP update that was sent to the county administrator. And that was also discussed by the school system the other night at the work session with the board.
Motion adjourned?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.